The United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands one nation indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, everyone, Mary John, Vice President, really in for President Teresa Ray. She is unavailable tonight. Start off with, we will approve the agenda. There are no changes to the agenda, no changes to the agenda. Do you have motion to approve the agenda? Second by Sue, second by Dale. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. See a thumbs up from Brad and a yes from the guests. All right, no opposed. Next thing, all to carry. Next up, item number three, recognition and presentations. We have a presentation on our school safety and reopening. Please take me this one.
I think it'll be me. All right, thank you. Today is our first instructional day back from winter recess. At 1:00 PM today, we have eighteen staff members and twenty-six students who are tested COVID-19. Actually, since 1:00 PM, that's sort of our daily cutoff so that we can get the logistics and the reporting done that we need to. But even since 1:00 PM, we've been informed of an additional eleven students. And two of those have actually come about from the test kits that were sent home today, which I'll address in a couple of moments. So while the Texas Health Department is working very hard, there have been some delays in testing and notifications, which make it a bit more challenging than it has been in the past to get accurate number of cases. This is due in large part because of the prevalence of positive cases in Cat County and really all of Western New York. In fact, after meeting today with the Cat County Health Department, there is an indication that in the very near future, there will be some changes coming to the contact process that is coming to follow. As soon as we have details on that, we will make sure that we notify the community as well. Staffing continues to be a challenge, so I'll make a plea once again for substitutes. If you have a friend, family member, if you know someone who can help the district by being a substitute, please contact any of our schools or our district office. We provide training, we provide all of the onboarding that's necessary to have these individuals become substitutes in our schools. Today, we had thirty-eight staff members out due to personal or family illness. And even with the substitute ranks that we have, that resulted in twelve unfilled TCS. Tomorrow, we have about ten positions at this moment that are currently unfilled. And what that does is it causes some pretty significant interruption in instructional process in our buildings. So once again, if you have someone, if you're available, we would love to have you become a part of Warrior Family as a substitute. There has been a lot of media coverage regarding the potential to reduce quarantine time from ten days to five days. At this time, we do not have approval through county, nor do we really plan to change our current practice of ten days. So a close contact by an unvaccinated individual, close contact by a vaccinated individual with symptoms, or a positive COVID test result will still result in a ten-day quarantine. The district received about thirteen hundred home test kits yesterday. Those were distributed to families today. The intent of these kits is to provide families with the ability to test symptomatic individuals at home. These are not for daily testing. We are not asking the students to test before coming to work or school on a daily basis. And part of it is because these are unlimited supply. We do not know when or if we will be receiving any more testing. Lastly, I would like to stress the importance of being attentive to your health and to the health of others. The current iteration of COVID is initially presenting as relatively mild symptoms, something like a slight headache, a runny nose, a mild cough, perhaps a loss of sense of smell or taste. If you present with any of these symptoms, it's very likely that you're COVID-19 positive, no matter what your vaccination status is. So please, again, this goes for our staff and our students, stay home or keep your learner home if they are ill and get tested.
If I can just add a couple of things there following today's conversation with county and school leaders. The test to stay option is something that's gained some conversation and momentum in parts of the state. At this time, it's my understanding that Cat County is not moving in that direction. Even if Sal Mankle wanted to do that, which would be a logistical concern with test kit availability, we would need Cat County Department of call approval, and it doesn't appear to be occurring at this point in time. It's something that is still currently being investigated. And just to clarify, some of the conversation that Dr. Dealer had certainly mentioned is the CDC is making recommendations and changes to shorten the quarantine period. There are some significant stipulations with that. The adult that would look to shorten that period would need to be vaccinated. They would need to wear one hundred percent of the time at all time, a separate difference, much more stringent non-cloth mask. And the individual would still need to be symptom-free. So from a logistical standpoint, that shortened condensed period would be somewhat challenging, and it applies only to vaccinated adult employees. So that's not something that, if you hear that circulating, that we're planning on embracing at this point.
I have a few questions on the whole topic of how they're back in school. First, with the test kits, what do we know about the, I guess, the details of them, the specs of them? What's the accuracy?
I can't give you a definitive answer on whether fifty-five percent or ninety percent. Much of it that I understand, the thought with other practitioners in schools and the medical individual that provides the county and that provides us, is a large portion of the action depends upon the administration of the test. If it isn't at the proper depth, you're very likely to get an inaccurate testing. What I understand is it's more likely that it will come back negative than a positive due to potential adult or individual misapplication of tests. Not as deep as the PCR test, but. What I understand from today is if you receive a rapid test and that gives you a positive, what I heard today is that you're still going to need to get a PCR test to get through.
So right now, we're thinking it's probably eighty-five percent positive if everything is done right?
That's a number that I've heard. I would say probably yes without any scientific care.
And then you mentioned if there is a positive, you still need to follow up. I know the messaging went out that we're supposed to call your screen, and she can advise what the next steps would be, which would be seek out your medical provider. And if you have a positive, you may have to send a rapid test that was likely to start. So who is reporting that to the county?
My understanding is that the parent tests and they are positive, that they are not reporting that. Parents would not be reporting, self-reporting. We administer the test, we do report.
So what's our advice then?
Well, if they test positive, contact Mrs. Creed and then seek out a formal PCR test. Then that will be for students or parents or staff.
Right, another topic, now that we're back in school and I don't know how many people have seen articles recently about surge of COVID and things like that. This has been a topic of discussion. What happens if the need arises to go remote again?
If that need arises, we'll go remote again. I don't have a specific threshold. I'm more concerned about the availability of staff to our programs. The student numbers at thirty-seven are not the highest we had. I would expect that they would increase based on what other school districts are reporting of significantly larger size. And smaller sizes reporting higher numbers of students. My concern is staff and which staff members might be positive. So I think, I would like to give a definitive number, but it's kind of like snow days and the cold weather. You know it's head close when it's head close. With eighteen staff and thirty-seven students, we're lower than we've been previously when we had the globe. So that's roughly about two thirds of where we're at.
All right, so another topic that came up after the last closure was with the kids going remote. We already know that it's successful for some, not successful for others. What happens to the kids when they come back, who need that extra help?
In terms of.
When we reopen or. Yeah, if we go remote, what happens when the kids weren't virtual? They're not getting all the services or falling behind because of not good virtual learns? What do we do?
Yes, there's a, there's a plan in place with regular instruction, you can get back school. We offer tutoring services after school. I'll be honest with you, the availability of staff to do the tutoring, the willingness of students to stay here tuning is, it's a struggle that we have not yet cracked. Getting that buy-in and speaking source for staff. We have some, we have tutors, we have tutors in the nation, we have outside vendors and providers that provide professional support. But we're at a very high level of exceed with extending the school day. And we, when we talked previously about our reading program, ways on which we're going to do that, assuming we won't talk a little bit about some of those yesterday. And that may help, but this is not going to be about twenty-one point two square fix. It's going to be twenty-one point two, twenty-three, and probably twenty-one point five to continue that progress to credit. We called today with the state advocating for the state to fund a full major year old program. There was some interest in that of the elected officials on the other side of the Zoom call. But that's a legislative process that may not happen this year. There was some interest in doing that, but the state is there yet from a funding perspective. It does appear that they will fully fund for the four-year-old TCS for whole day, which is good. Can we hire more students?
Sure, so tutoring is still available after school. Especially for the high school, pretty much any teacher who's a. Has the ability to say after school, we have to fit in the world of students. We also have formal tutoring that can happen after school. At the high school level, I know that they've already begun to identify students who they have concerns over as part of our RTI and FSS, or multi-tiered system of support, which runs case follow. We know who some of those students are. We know the students who didn't do well last year or after the year before that on the construction. So in the event that we had to go to remote, we would already be prepared when they returned because they haven't demonstrated success in that modality previously. And then they will follow that system of support that we have. But in fact, Sandra, Dr. Silverton will be presenting on that system, FSS, that are affecting. But that'll answer against some of the questions that we have over what happens when students doesn't perform academically or the services that we can provide.
Do we have any other questions? Yes, or Brad? This is again Dr. Dealer with some updates on some instructional program.
Yes, thank you. Let's see. So what I'm going to do today is just provide a couple of updates, partially on the previous presentation that our last board meeting on reading and academic success focused around reading and writing. I'm going to provide an update on our district and staff wellness initiative that'll happen tonight, which goes hand in hand, really with some of the concerns that we have over our staff being able to. January eighteenth, which is our next board meeting, we're going to hear a presentation on professional education in a pandemic. As I mentioned, we're also going to hear about our multi-tiered system of supports. And we're going to hear a similar report to what we had on reading, but this topic will be mathematics. On February first, we're going to hear from our instructional coaches and how they support instruction and our teachers in the classrooms. And the other sort of half of what I'm presenting this evening will be on the student social emotional well day. And that'll be done by our SCL coach, Corinne Quinn. So just a brief update since our last gathering. You'll recall that we had a presentation from each one of our buildings on where we currently stand with regard to reading. We've heard about some of the benchmarks, we've heard about the current concerns and struggles that we have focused on reading. I will share with you that we have those concerns really across the board. You heard on it with one particular topic in general. We have those concerns pretty much with any one of our regions courses. They're pervasive all the way through, really from kindergarten through twelfth grade. Our biggest area that we see, what I'm going to say, is learning loss deficits that we can quantify are really in grades one, two, three, and likely stretched into four. That's because during those particular grade levels, an awful lot of learning occurs, right? At the same time, those students have had a significantly interrupted formal education process. So over the past two years, if we take a current third grader, it's highly likely that they may not have been in school for much more than six to nine months of formal education. And then those were interrupted, they may have been remote for a long period of time. We still have students that are a hundred percent remote now. We, while we can say that we do a great job with remote instruction, it is not the same as having a student in front of you. Being able to read their body language and being able to meet their needs one-on-one in a small group and provide interventions, actually immediately, the way they're best provided. We also have concerns really with eight, nine, ten grade levels. These are students who have interrupted math and ELA in particular. They have not had state assessments and are now likely going to be taking region exams for the very first time. Those region exams that benchmark, we do not anticipate changing. It's going to be the same as it was before. So if I have a math student who's currently in tenth grade, they didn't have the same math algebra last year. They likely had an interrupted eighth grade. And now they're going to have to be sitting for the geometry exam this June. So those are another other areas that you're going to hear more about. I don't want to paint a negative picture. We're no different in these concerns and areas than districts all over New York State and all over the country. In fact, I had an opportunity to look at some of those charts that we saw last week for other districts, neighboring districts and districts across the state in grades two and three, which is where we had a lot of those concerns. And they are literally exactly the same. Very high tier three concerns for our students. And our students who are on grade level, we're pretty close to the same number that they had percentage point. So while that's not an excuse, it is simply a reality that a lot of us are dealing with. Things have not been re-normed when we look at an assessment, which means, you know, we just changed the benchmarks. So what we expect a student to read in third grade now is exactly the same as what we expected a third grade student to read four years ago. Yet that third grade student now has been without the same type of instruction. So they're not going to be able to meet that level. So we as a school district need to identify what we're going to do to overcome those challenges. We spent a significant amount of time yesterday. Every one of the buildings had an opportunity during that professional development day to identify what the barriers are to success specific for reading. The purpose for that is so that we can begin over the next several weeks to put together a cohesive plan to really target reading instruction at the age through seven grade level. Of course, that's very important to watch at the eight through twelve, but really we're seeing the most learning loss and concerns at the grade eight through seven. So over the next several weeks, as I mentioned, teams from each one of the buildings are going to be working together to put together a plan, which will really change the way we provide that instruction. It may result in lengthier school days, it may result in the opportunity to attend school in a non-traditional school format on Sundays, or Saturdays, rather. It may stretch the school year over the summer. We may take a look at grouping students by ability as opposed to by age. Some of these things traditionally in a school are done to keep things more organized and easy for the adults, but it might not make sense for the students. You know, if we take a student who's, let's say, seven years old, right? And is likely to be in second or third grade. And we, our expectation is that just because they're seven, they can read and do math and understand science and social studies at the exact same level as everyone else because they're the same age. It may be more, make more sense if we look at them, what's their ability in English? And those students get grouped together by ability level, and those students then get grouped together in math. We see that in a traditional sort of one-room schoolhouse setting where the teacher can differentiate larger numbers of students. We're sort of taking a look at that type of a model. And that may be one of the things that comes out of this. It allows us really to teach to the students based upon where they are right now academically as opposed to where they are chronologically. So those are some of the things that have come about. As I mentioned, at the February board meeting, you're going to see sort of a comprehensive plan that we're going to begin to put in place this year that will take us over the next two to three years with the goal of getting the vast majority of our students reading on grade level. So the other topic that I wanted to touch base on today is how are we responding to student and staff needs? In order for students to be receptive to learning, they need to have several things in place, right? Teachers can learn about a hierarchy of needs, meaning, well, we can have a student who may be physically present in a geometry class. If they haven't slept, if they're hungry, if they have other significant concerns, they're not going to be really receptive to learning. They're not going to be able to take in that information. So there are a significant number of social and emotional needs that our students need to have addressed prior to them being able to learn in an efficient and effective manner. That has really gained importance over the past several years. And that one thing that the pandemic has shown us is that we really need to be focusing on that. Fortunately, we have, just because of the right thing to do, been focusing on the social emotional learning of our students for several years. What we're going to do today is talk a little bit about the student needs. But one of the things that came about, and I believe it was Mr. Dunn a year ago, who asked the question, well, what about our staff? And that's a terrific question. And hopefully, we'll be able to answer that well today because we have done some significant things for our staff and will continue to do so over the next several years. One thing with students coming back as well, and staff for that matter, this particular year, is that we've seen some relatively significant changes in behavior. That was present through September, October, as well as November. These are some newspaper clippings from just one week, just one week, all local school that occurred regarding school violence. We are not different than other schools in New York State or across the country. And then we've seen an increase in, I'm just going to call it inappropriate behavior in the halls, in the classroom. We know that there has been more student altercation in the halls this year than there have been probably in the past eight or nine years combined. That is a bit of a representation of what we're seeing in society, which we'll talk about a little later. But these are things that we as a school district need to address and get sort of handled on well before we can start teaching geometry or reading and writing. So the basic premise is we began to say, you know, what is it that's happening in schools? What has changed with the attitudes and behaviors of our students and adults? As we looked at, we said, you know, okay, if we really want to find out what the climate of our school is with regard to the students, we need to ask the students. If we want to find out what the well-being of our employees is, we absolutely need their input. We don't have a lot of time for long lengthy assessments, so we needed them to be short and well-placed. And we had the also, the basic premise that humans in general will perform better at what they're doing if they are well, if they are well physically, if they're well emotionally, and as well as if they're well socially. And that really is our goal. The other part is, in a realistic way, it's simply the right thing to do. We want our staff, the adults in our buildings, to be happy. We want them to enjoy coming to work. As individuals who work with people, particularly with students, if we have our adults coming in and they are not having a good day, for whatever reason that might be, workplace anxiety, a problem at home, it does not take very long for students to pick up on that. And then they can go downhill very quickly in a classroom, and that begins to interrupt the instruction and can very well lead to escalation of student problems. So one of the ways that we started is we contracted with an organization called A Value of Beings to provide formal assessments with us. We also contracted with an organization called Rethink Ed to provide curriculum resources. The intent here is for those two organizations really to work together, find out exactly what our student and staff needs are, and then provide curriculum resources so that we don't have to have our educators developing curriculum for themselves and for our students. So focusing now on the student assessment component. We had several different short and timely assessments that were put in place. There was one assessment by Rethink Ed that was sort of a comprehensive, almost like a pre-test that we gave in the beginning part of the year. A Value of Beings uses a process called Observation Oriented Modeling, in which they offer multiple surveys throughout the day and throughout the year to identify certain trends in student behaviors. Additionally, the building, and this is where I mentioned Corinne Quinn will be talking with us in a few weeks. She's going to go into the surveys that were developed specifically at Seneca Intermediate and some of the information and some of the actions that they've taken, really at Seneca, that deal with the SCL needs of the students. But they developed some short building level assessments that evaluated students, students and students' teacher relationships. So one of the factors, some of the things actually that we have learned. And this is one of the assessments that was given in the spring of last year to students through A Value of Beings. So this is sort of an example of how the feedback comes to us. The question on the left is, I feel supported by my teachers. Teachers misunderstand why I do what I do. Teachers understand my needs. I feel I need to hide negative emotions from teachers. I wish I had an adult in school I could talk to. And one of the interesting things is that they break things down by a variety of different groups. And this one happened to be by demographics of race. And what we learned from this is that our American native or our lesbian native or our Seneca nation who primarily actually seem to be real, feel at least very well supported by the students. Those numbers came back very high. And they seem to be acclimating relative as well in the context. On the other end of the spectrum, the students that we should have the greatest concern with are the students that we really have the smallest population of, which is our Latinx, our multiracial, and our African-American. So this allows our teachers, particularly our SCL and our wellness committees at each one of the buildings and our administrators to begin to say, okay, how, how are we identifying and meeting the needs of those particular students? Another one that was kind of interesting is, you know, how are students accessing the information and the resources that they have? We have said over and over again, and actually Mr. Bryant and I talked about it earlier. We provide tutoring after school. Yes, we've struggled to get some staffing for that because some of our staffing staff is getting fatigue. At the same time, it's also difficult to get our students. We're noticing that some resilience and some stamina issues are coming through with our students. At the end of the day, they're done. If we're fortunate enough to even get them to focus throughout the whole way. So while we can have resources for our students, ensuring that they access them is an entirely different topic. One of the factors or considerations that this research organization looked at. One of the factors or considerations that, um, this research organization looked at was whether or not a student self-identifies as shy. And many of the reports that we get back from them are broken down, not just by demographics or property level, but also by whether or not the student identifies as being shy. And what we have noticed is that many of our shy students do not identify at the same rate of simply being happy. We also find, um, that they do not access resources in the same way that our non-shy students do. And, you know, sometimes we think of this as a, oh, well, that just sort of makes sense, right? As we say, if you need help after school, come see me. Well, they're not going to come see you just by their nature, they're shy. And it's important to recognize that shyness is simply a character trait. It's not a problem that needs to be fixed, right? People are shy, there's nothing wrong with that. So we as an educational organization need to adapt the way we provide access to resources to ensure that they feel comfortable, or we actually go to those students and encourage them and provide the resources to them as opposed to being sort of a self-service model. One of the other things that we identified or that was identified for us is that our Native American population identifies most significantly as being shy. And that really should relate to the way some of our services are provided to them and has allowed our, um, uh, Native American resources to be adapted to ensure that we are being proactive in providing those as sort of a simple saying, here they are. Additionally, we have, um, the student voices provided to us. And these are just some anecdotal things that were provided to us to sort of allow us to say, well, this kind of, you know, help us understand it a little bit better when we're with the students, what they have to say. I'd like to ask, can I play with you guys too later, but I don't have the confidence to do anything like that. If I'm sad, I just don't tell the teachers. I never show my emotions to teachers. Um, and these are males and, you know, there's a typical male response. Um, in fact, there's, you know, some memes and some TikTok videos that are dated all around where males, whether they be fifth grade or all the way up to adults, um, typically don't access resources or have people that they go to. They just sort of deal with it and don't tell anybody. Um, and that's something that we really need to be talking about in the school, um, and addressing so that there are, we are able to provide and track remedies of concerns before or problems before they become. Couple other things that we learned, you know, schools do not exist in isolation from our current larger racially divided society. The school itself, you know, is a reflection of the community that it serves, and that community can be Salamanca or the, you know, the state or even the country. When we're seeing violence and racial division on TV on a regular basis, whether we, we see it in social media, I know for a fact that the kids don't watch TV and watch the news, but I'll tell you what, it's all over Instagram, it's all over TikTok. Um, you know, the polarization of our nature or our nation around different issues is coming into school. Um, and we need to make sure that we're addressing that, um, whether that be in the classroom through formal education or in a slightly more targeted, um, manner. And this really ties in to what we referenced as popularly responsive teacher practice. And you'll recall that I spoke to that when I, after coming back from the Natty Conference. Salamanca, I think, has always done a pretty good job of being responsive because we need it to be, and it's the right thing to do, given the population that we serve. Um, but this really just reaffirms that and provides us with a little bit more opportunity to focus on that. So this here is another example, this isn't intended for you to read, but this is just some of the, the information that comes about, um, uh, that our S E L coach perceives and that then can turn to and work with our staff, work with our students. I mentioned that we also incorporate Rethink Ed, um, as a resource for curriculum. What this group of, um, what this organization does is they identify the Rethink Ed curriculum, which are lessons, um, lesson plans or videos. So in this particular case, it recommended for teachers to use anxiety in the classroom, supporting someone with anxiety, tips for teachers with anxious students, those particular lessons, given the responses that they receive from students with that particular test. So the whole point here is to provide a sort of just-in-time responsive curriculum to what we're seeing the students need there. The, our S E L coach, um, Corinne Quinn is going to go over the, the additional portions that we have with students in significantly more detail, I think you're going to find it really interesting, uh, once she presents it February. What I want to extend into is the work that we've been doing with the adults. We know that things like passion fatigue, um, which is simply the fact that our adults in the buildings, um, not just our teachers, it's our bus drivers, our social workers, realistically and a hundred percent our administrators, um, are getting fatigue, right? There are consistent wearing, um, away at, you know, certain pressure points and stresses, um, that the adults are experiencing. And we need to make sure that the adult needs are being met. Otherwise, when an adult has a problem in a school, that translates instantly into problems with, um, our students. So for our staffing model, um, when we talk about how we're getting to know what those emotional needs are, the staff is assessed two to three times per year. The focus is on really the overall wellbeing of the staff, um, with some pretty open-ended questions. And then we break down that data by department, building, job, station. So this isn't just our teachers, this runs for every single employee in the district. Um, and we ran an assessment in the spring, um, and we ran another one in the fall. That data came to us, uh, back to us in fourth week in December, so it's really still being segregated or disseminated rather and adjusted by our leadership team. Yesterday, the, um, individuals or two of the individuals from Value of Beings presented that to every one of our, um, buildings. Uh, they're going to be working with our business office as well as our transportation building, ground office, um, at upcoming times. But, um, they had an opportunity in a private session without any administrator to really talk about what those results were and gather more feedback, um, from the individual, uh, in each building. So what's some of the data that we've received? Um, this is from the spring. They are very glossy, right? Um, overall satisfaction, forty-eight or forty-nine percent of our staff say that they're very satisfied or did say. Forty-three percent said that they were somewhat satisfied. Um, six percent were dissatisfied, two percent were considered to or said that they were very dissatisfied. We then could break that down by building, which we see on the right side here. And it's happy, exhausted, overwhelmed and stressed. And each one of those colors are different buildings. Um, and when we look at this, you know, we pull up, okay, so who's the leader for happiness? Um, that would be the high school. Who is a little bit behind, um, prospect? Now, there's not a lot that we can pull from this, right? It's really sort of a generic sense, we're going to go into this in a little bit more detail. But when we look at who's exhausted, overwhelmed and stressed, we see that the students, or I'm sorry, the staff and prospects overwhelmingly respond in a higher manner than the other building. Um, and that can allow us then to determine what type of resources we begin to ship to that so that we can, you know, begin to decrease that. We also said, you know, there were questions about resources. Where do we see needs and resources? Do those need to improve? Um, what about facilities and repair? So this was, our spring, we really sort of ran an array, or the organization did. And when I say an array, I mean, it really ran a pretty wide spectrum so that we could then identify in the fall what we needed to target based upon that initial set of data. So we ran one that focused a lot more on staff, um, wellbeing, um, in the fall. And, um, what we saw is that staff in each one of the buildings, um, not necessarily district exhausted as much, but across the building are self-identified as more exhausted, more overwhelmed and more stressed than they did in spring. Now, some of that, sure, might make sense. At least in the spring, we have a, you know, a light at the end of the tunnel for our teaching staff that summer's coming, right? In the fall, we were sort of expecting to come back to a more normal year and we learned that this is really just more of the same that we didn't want to see through the past year and a half. Um, so, but what we as an organization need to do is recognize that. There's also, you know, other information that we can pull away from. This, we learned this yesterday, actually. You know, it's not just that district office is less stressed, overwhelmed, um, and more exhausted. But what we should be doing is they should be taking away from that that the people that they serve are more stressed, more overwhelmed, um, and more exhausted. So what can those individuals do to reduce some of that stress moving forward? Um, it was then broken down by building. Um, where do we see the overall wellbeing, um, by building and low, medium and high? Um, we'll see once again that what we saw in the spring also sort of rang through for the most part of each one of the buildings. Um, the building with the highest overall identified wellbeing is the high school. And the one that's the most concerning is prospect, um, with Seneca. Um, we also have that broken down by department. Um, the district office, transportation and that all fucked together so that we don't have the ability to, um, identify certain individuals, um, that will be transportation and the food services in there as well. So what are some of the things that we can take away from this information? And there's a significantly larger amount of information. This is just, I just want to provide a bit of an overview of, you know, sort of what's happening with regard to the S E L and the wellbeing of our staff. A little over fifty percent of the staff said that they were more happy in the fall than they were in the spring. Seventy-five percent said that they were more engaged, um, which makes sense, right? We're actually in school now, um, and the, um, fact that we're present in a building and our students are here would allow us to be more engaged. The other piece of that is that for the most part, the staff is identifying as more, um, overwhelmed, more stressed and more exhausted. And one of the indicators that came about from, that contributes to that is the quality of communication from administration. So that's a big takeaway right there, right? And it's something that's relatively easy to sort of fix. We as administrators will be meeting tomorrow, actually, which is the first time we're all together since the report came out, to develop a better communication plan. One of the things that we've tried to do is sort of limit the number of meetings, um, so that teachers can work with their students more frequently. But one thing that has come about from that as an unintended consequence is that staff don't feel as though there, there's as much, as much communication and engagement. So they feel, at least through the report and the information that we have, that things are happening to them and that they don't have the same understanding of, you know, how things are coming about. There's also a reality that things are happening just to education across the board, right? We just get tested yesterday. We want to get them out today. So everything comes about very, very quickly. We didn't know when they were coming. We didn't even know they were coming until several days ago. Um, and then we need to get them out. And that simple thing like that can some, for some people be sort of the lash, raw, broke cavity. This is one more thing that disrupts what they thought it was going to look like today. Or coming in and finding out that I don't have a sub within it, or my two team teachers don't have subs, and that my teaching assistant now has to get pulled out and everything that I had planned for today is gone. Um, so one of our goals is going to be to improve the clarity and consistency as well as the timeliness of the communication that comes from our administration. We're hoping that that will have a small indication of improvement in the staff wellbeing. Couple other things that we needed, uh, uh, that we learned is that there's initiative fatigue. Um, you know, we are consistently trying to improve things and move forward. And sometimes, you know, actually, even in response to what we heard yesterday, um, less is more, right? We need to be doing less and we need to be doing a little bit better, not simply throwing more things on the table to do. Um, we need to include our stakeholders in the decisions that we have. Um, our communication needs to improve at every one of the levels. The other thing is that each building and department is different. So whatever the solution is, needs to be responsive to that particular building's needs. So the district-wide solution is not necessarily the solution. So there were also some unintended consequences that came out of this process. Um, one of them were several, several thank yous that, from staff members, is that thank you for doing this. It's good to know that you, the administration, the school board cares about how we are feeling and how we're doing. And I don't know many districts across Western New York that are placing this much of an emphasis on the wellbeing of staff members. Um, we know that the stuff, success of our school is truly a hundred percent dependent upon its supporters. We can't make our students learn in the classroom. They need to be encouraged to learn in an environment for them to be able to learn, they need to be, uh, creative. We also can't simply make our teachers teach better. We can't make our bus drivers drive better. We need to create an environment where that can occur organically if we really want it to be that way. Um, we also learned that staff is concerned about retribution and being found out. I don't necessarily fully understand the history, um, but one thing that has been clear through some research is that in general schools, um, our organizations that have historically been concerned with retribution. Teachers are afraid that, you know, the administration is going to find out who says something and then something bad is going to happen to them. So that has caused us as a leadership organization or a leadership group, um, to start a book study called The Peerless Organization. Um, and that book really circles around creating what's referred to as psychological safety in an organization. So and that's based on the premise of what makes up a good team. Years ago, we used to think a good team was, um, comprised of a diverse representation. Uh, a male, a female, you know, someone who likes the outdoors, someone who likes to read books, you know, a diverse background. That all does contribute, but it doesn't contribute as significantly to a team where every team member feels safe to contribute to the best of their ability, right? You can have all of those individuals on a team, but if there's one loud person who doesn't let anybody else talk, we're not going to move from a good organization to a great. We're not going to make significant incremental changes based on who we are if we have a culture where people are afraid to do what they know is that, say that, so that we can all assume together. That's what this book focuses on, is how we create that environment where people feel safe to be who they are and are appreciated for their contributions that they make on an intellectual level, um, and can do so on a regular basis. Um, what are some other things? So last year, we had Puppy Day. Um, in fact, if you asked a number of our staff members to figure out the high school, um, what one of the best PD days was, it was the day that, um, we had puppies, um, in the, what? Or, um, in the courtyard. Uh, that was a great day, right of our PD, we served lunch, um, and they will tell you that that is probably the best professional development they ever had at school. Um, we've had spirit weeks, not just for our students, but also for our staff. We've limited some of our meetings. We've increased the check-ins that we have with staff. Um, we know that there are some staff members who are dealing with stresses, not just in school, but at home as well. And our administrative team, as well as our social workers who support staff, has made an effort to check in on those individuals more frequently. Um, we have provided personalized professional development for all of our leadership personnel. So any one of our school leaders that, um, interacts or oversees, supervises, um, other adults, um, thanks to the abilities and provision of the school board about three or four months ago, um, those leaders all have the opportunity to meet with individualized professional development. Um, we have also, thanks to the board, reduced compensation packages. Um, and that has gone to, uh, almost every one of the organizations to figure out how we can recognize those people who are doing the good work, not just with, um, you know, saying things, but also with the manner with the most right conversation. Um, we're spending significantly more time sharing the results that we have, as we did yesterday, and listening to concerns. We are vocalizing the willingness to help those individuals who, um, need help at that particular time. Each one of the buildings and departments, as well as committees, that are more, um, invigorated than they were, um, two years ago. We're in the process, as I mentioned, of reviewing our entire communication process, um, and we're encouraging engagement, not forcing stakeholders. Um, we provide opportunities for those individuals to be involved that want to be involved, but are not going to yield for a forceful. So that's really sort of where we are at, at the moment, um, with regard to the wellness initiative that we started about two years ago. Um, and that I, in fact, you know, said that we'd focus tonight on the adult component. Corinne Quinn will be focusing significantly on the student component. After the end of the part.
There was a lot next to you.
There was?
Yes, Brad?
I'm good. Jess, thank you.
Yes, well, and it's, it's, I'll be honest with you, sort of today was, um, especially after the wrap-up yesterday, uh, and the opening this all up. And thank you for asking that. Or it's, um, it's, it's, there's some positive pieces that come about and then some frustrating components. Um, because Because as we begin to sort of shine the light on some of the well-being, we're also shining light and some things are coming to life that really are sort of disappointing. I'd like to say that all of our staff members in all of the buildings treat each other as professionals, but I can't say that unfortunately. And I think it, we're moving in a better place because those are going to come about. And we're going to outline what is appropriate behavior in the workplace and what isn't. So I think overall, this is going to be more challenging than I had anticipated. Because, as, as well as given for our coaches, because this has been going on. And I'm sure, you know, anybody who's worked in a workplace knows that there are mischievous, I mean, you're going to say mean things that happen. I'd like to think that it doesn't happen here. And I watched a video today, which actually, I mean, I, it actually was so disappointing and it really hurt me personally to see how two of our educators treated two other people the day before Christmas. And I think what's good about this process is that those things are now coming out and we can talk about them. And we can now address them in a positive way. And people can understand that that's not going to be accepted anymore. And that will allow us as an organization to get to another, a better level. I think many organizations sort of pretend it doesn't happen. It's much easier to not talk about it, right? I mean, everything's great, just continue to work, you get your paycheck every two weeks, that should be your only incentive to move forward. We're not going to become the organization that we tend to be until we start talking about things that are hurtful to other people because that truly impacts the way we do our business. And our, we are a people business, we are about relationships, and we really need to understand how to treat each other in a professional, at, at the very least, professionalism. We should be treating each other in a kind manner and trying to, at all of it, absolutely. Thank you.
So move on to communications, public communications and/or Title VI parent rivalry. Do you have anything on Title VI? Okay, we'll move on to central office, Mrs.
You've probably heard enough from me too, so, yeah.
All right, let's hear from Chris then.
Well, I'm proud to announce that we do have two students that just recently finished their graduation requirements in December, so before they're at the home, they should be here at the Delia and Jan Word and the other, everybody here.
What do you got, Neil?
It was great to have kids back in the building. There's nothing like the buzz of having them around. We're able to do so much more than we are with them. We've been working hard on implementing the new Plonix program. The teachers are really enjoying it so far, so I think we're going to see some rate growth with that. We actually have a meeting coming up at first grade on Thursday, just making sure we're implementing it the right way. And not trying to teach too many things at one time and making sure we're doing it the right way. Great to have everybody back in person. Yesterday was wonderful to be able to interact with each other on a different.
Is that, you know, we have online? Nikki, you have anything for us?
Can you hear me okay? Did you hear me?
All right, Nikki, when you connect, just let us know. We'll come back to you though. Yeah, Mrs. Do that.
People Services and Central Registration is on the move. We are getting ready to move to our new location, so we will be sending out some information to all the families and publishing that. And because it's already the new year, it's crazy to start thinking about this, but within the next thirty days, we will start getting ready to take kindergarten and U P K registrations for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So we are off to a great start and looking forward to having some time for all of you to come to our new location.
Benny?
So for the professional development, we are beginning to look for, we have some continuing offerings we have, but we're also starting right now to look at our summer and then next school year, but that's going later. We're still in the process of trying to play a substitute. Our coaches are working closely at each grade level and departments. We are working on individual action plans with each grade level, which we'll be able to share that more, and you'll see what that looks like in February. So we're just trying to continue to do what we've been doing and look forward to summer and next school year.
Yeah, Chris Kane.
Well, it'd be half my current title and half parent, but I'd like to advocate just for, you know, athletics and sports. The unfortunate news that we won't be having basketball at the A C C and just other locations are becoming more difficult. So I just want to make sure we're, we're trying our best to allow our youth to use our facilities as much as possible. And to try to provide some sort of active triggers throughout these next couple of months that I think are going to be difficult. High school level, we've had some good, successful runs the last few weeks with our, with our team, so we're holding on by a thread, so I'm just advocating for support.
Can you hear me when I talk? Okay, good. Things at Seneca are going really well.
We should, I'm not sure.
Jessa, you can hear Nikki?
Yeah.
Nikki, nice job.
I'm tricking the system.
On Facebook, quite frankly, but I,
Oh, great.
don't know why the audio wouldn't pull in.
I'll type it and send it.
Apparently everyone else can hear Nikki, but us, we can't hear in this room.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's move on to more than that. Oh, all right, Bob said Marcy's up next.
Thanks, Bob. Well, aside from technical difficulties, we have, we now have four monitors in here that can all work tied together or independently. You can cast from your phone to any one of the monitors and have what you're using. Yeah, no, Chris, you cannot cast your phone. You can cast from your phone to one of the monitors. And there are still some, obviously, a couple of little glitches in the system that's, that we're working out. I didn't know we wouldn't be able to hear Nikki, but it's all set up to work independently. The cameras are installed, these, the two P T Z cameras up on the walls now, they have to be connected in. I think this one, the wire goes, I don't know, somewhere crazy. And Mike, the techs, all the techs in general, are working diligently to get all of the stuff connected and in. So we will no longer need a variety of different systems trying to tie all multiple systems together. It will be one system. So if you're presenting in the front, you can use these as prompts for you. The R Ts can work completely independently, so if you're doing something in here, you can have people working on this R T, that R T. The projectors do work because the monitors that we want to get for the front and the back are back ordered, probably indefinitely until COVID's over, I'm not sure. But those monitors will also be set up to work independently, so you could literally have six to seven screens functioning on different media and all of it working either together or independently. So it's pretty, I'm, I'm pretty excited, it's pretty cool stuff. So that's amongst other things and keeping everybody up and happy. From the tech perspective, the, I, the techs are really, they're doing a great job. I'm thoroughly impressed with what they do, so. I'm fully done. I didn't need to talk to start with.
So Mrs. Beaver responded that things in Seneca are going well and they are so excited to be back. She loved the fact that we were able to be back and with team building activities and then social emotional learning focused yesterday for students and, you have to collect data to guide our instruction. And they continue to be focused on individual plans for the students that use manuals, what I do blocks, thirty minutes for reading and thirty minutes for math. And the generator includes assessing our students for data collection to guide our instruction. Sorry for the technical difficulties, typing this with excitement, so, but okay, blah, blah, blah. Hope you can hear her, hear it. We can't hear Nikki, but we can read it, so we'll improvise, so thank you. Would you say what's next, Bob? Sandra or Jerry? Sandra?
Hi, everybody. Trying to think about what to say without spoiling what, the discussion that will occur in a couple of weeks. I would say, though, if there are specific questions that you have in mind and that you'd like, need to be very pointed in, in response to the presentation, I would greatly appreciate that. My job is to ensure that the supports that people need, especially for students, get in their hands and that we reduce anything that get in the way of students being successful in learning. And so with that, a lot of my work is streamlining the various things that are happening, happening across the different buildings and try to bring those together so that there's a consistency and integration of services for academics, social, emotional support, as well as behavioral. So in terms of what's new and exciting, it's just that idea that we're having those conversations at the building and really thinking hard about what happens when students aren't learning. What are we going to do to support them on a gradation of, of tiers? And then what, and we're also considering something, which is another question, which is what happens when students already know and can do? What do we do for those students as well? So we think about ultimately, who are we serving and who are we not, and what can we do about that? And so those would be those things that I can speak more directly to in a couple of weeks.
How are you? I'll stand up so you can see me. Yeah, so, I won't do that to everybody. No, thank you for letting me speak briefly. Just want to say, I'm really happy with how our special education department is running and functioning. We've been, our, our service providers, our teachers and our related service providers, our O T, P T, speech, social workers, counselors, really done a great job switching back and forth between remote and in-person instruction. Teletherapy's been seamless for families. We've, geez, already let's see, this year, in terms of meetings, we're already at the, on Thursday, we'll have, we'll have our hundredth C S E or C P S E meeting of the year. Will be on Thursday, so we're humming right along. I'm just really proud of the team, of the team that we have here in our district and the ability to provide the supports to all of our families. But also to, to, especially now, with so many of the concerns and questions that come up with students needing more support and how can we help support them? I feel like we've been really responsive to those families and trying to answer those questions, particularly, obviously, through the special education program. But I think we're doing a really nice job here in our district, I think, in talking to other special ed directors around the area. They're running into issues that we're not because of the groundwork we've laid as a district, to make sure that we're, we're heading those things off before they become problems. So I'm just proud of the work that we're doing as a district and I appreciate all the support that you folks as a board have given us to be able to do those things, so thank you.
I did it. I did it, sorry. I fixed it. I found sound.
So I'll go out to board message. Yes, let's see if we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Don't, I don't, I don't have the ability to fix it. I don't.
Well, you can type us an essay and we'll come back to it. So I'm assuming we're not going to be able to hear Brad either.
I can play them through Facebook, but it will be delayed. If that makes sense.
Yeah, let's try that one time.
Okay. Can you hear me? No, it's not going to work. I'll type something.
All right, if you and Brad can type us an essay, we'll come back to it in a few minutes. Brad has one. I just want to wish everyone a happy new year, I want to show my gratitude for all the hard work going into navigating through these very trying times. Thanks, Brad. So.
Well, I'd like to say that I commend the teachers and the administrators in our school that have to be going through this. It's got to be very hard. Not only your health, but your family's health and what you can bring home. And it's got to be very scary for you, and I commend you, thank you very much.
Barb?
I agree with what has been said, we did it one hundred percent. I wish everybody a safe and healthy new year. And I thank Mark again for bringing to light how important it is to disrupt travel professionally and respectfully at all levels. I hope we can all do that.
Dale? Also, I wish everybody a happy and healthy new year. We all know that that's Well, same, I wish everyone a happy new year, welcome back to school. I appreciate all the hard work that everybody is doing to do everything we can for our entire school community here. It's not easy. Sometimes it feels like we're blowing in the wind. I was in a meeting yesterday at my own work and one of the things that I made a comment of is that the muddy waters that we're in are muddier than they've ever been. It's difficult to understand what the right thing to do is. It's difficult to understand which way we should go, you know, and this conversation just doesn't want to end. Personally at work, I've been dealing with this for, well, going on twenty-one months. Every month, I have to deal with it. Here, it's the same thing. We've been dealing with this for that long. It hasn't gotten any easier. You think after this much time, we have it all figured out and we'll do what's smooth as possible. No, that's not how it works. That's one thing that we do know for certain, that's not how it works. And there are moments. So it's difficult, but I give everybody credit, everything that they're doing. One of the things I always wanted to, you know, reiterate is something we talked about a long time ago. The plans we made, we're doing it with best interest in mind. Safety is always one of our priorities. And when it comes to these times when we make a decision, that's what I like to think about. And when it comes to these times when we make a decision, that's what I like to think about. We're making this decision and we're going to err on the side of caution. So whatever happens in the weeks to come, you know, what's happened before, we always got to keep that in mind. One of the biggest focuses, and I think sometimes we lose that, any organization can lose that. You forget what your higher calling is. You forget what your purpose is. You know, sometimes we get tied up in my personal issue, this personal issue. I don't like that person. I don't like this policy. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't. Hi. We're forgetting how high your calling. We're here for a higher purpose. And if you don't know what I'm talking about, then you need to stop and think about exactly why you're here. There is a higher purpose in being here. We need COVID to do what we're doing. So we always got to leave that. We got to put aside my personal this and my personal that, or I feel this and I feel that. Because you're here for something else. So whenever decisions are made, again, it's not made lightly. As far as we take criticism, that's fine. I'll take criticism every single day of my life. Doesn't matter the week. It's something that feels right. We're going to keep moving forward. We're going to do the best and hopefully make some right decisions. And yes, I agree. Things that, things need to be talked about. We need to make sure that our staff is on board with everything we're trying to do. And this is a marathon, not a sprint. And when we talk to staff, we try and uncover what we really felt. We want to get some real answers. We want to have those uncomfortable conversations. We do it. When we have our meetings, when we have an executive session, trust me, there's plenty of uncomfortable conversations to have. But you know what? We do it. Mark's laughing.
Confirm that.
That's the best all day. And you know, and everyone's got to remember, you know, the seven board members of us, we're not here because we're making a decent salary to be here. We're here as volunteers. We're here to improve this district. We're here to try to do what's right for this district. So that's another thing to consider, you know, regardless of whatever happens. We take punches all the time. But there's not very many people who want to do this. The board members that are here, some of us have been here for quite a long time because we want to be, because we want to help. So that's another thing to consider. Nobody can predict the future. We don't know what's coming, but I just wanted to remind everybody some of these facts that we do. Something that sticks with us every day, every week. Bottom line, here for the kids. That's it, my soapbox. Other names?
Jessica. Let's have a good finish to the school year and do what we need to. Jessica did reply uh and she writes, I wish everyone uh well and a huge thank you to the staff for all of your hard work and stay safe and be well. Um, so I, I think that's a good sentiment and if I could jump in here. Um, and I'm going to steal something that Dr. Beeler has said for quite some time and it's we need to assume good intentions. And as we as adults struggle with COVID fatigue, it's easy, it's very easy to have a short fuse and be walking around with a blowtorch just waiting to light it. And what we learned, what I've learned is that now more than ever, we need to assume good intentions with people. Just this week, we had an adult that, you know, made a mistake. The world isn't going to end. It's in the grand scheme of everything that's happening, it's not a huge deal, but it was something that needed to be addressed. And in this crisis, it would have been really easy for the supervisor to come on court and just, you know, run around with their hair on fire. Instead, they assumed good intentions and said, we have an issue, we have to fix it. They came to me, I said, okay, one, two, three, this is what we're going to do. Let's get through today. Let's talk about tomorrow and by seven AM tomorrow, it's going to be all resolved. We'll follow up to make sure that the adults know what the expectation is. And that's a lesson that we can take with us for dealing with each other, for dealing with students, for dealing with parents. If we create or perpetuate an environment where the first reaction is nuclear, there's not going to be much left. And I can tell you, we had presenters from Nebraska here yesterday and I haven't gotten the full um dissertation on how that went and the emotion, but I did speak with the presenters who actually are working with indigenous communities in Nebraska. I did not know that when we made that initial action. I saw them on social media and I thought, this is a message we need to hear. They came at their own expense to come here and we compensated them for their, their time, but they had to leave work to come do this because they're so engaged with the social emotional work. And the comments that they said to us about our district was well worth the small amount we paid to have this engaging conversation about our health and the health of our district. And while the, the, the knee jerk reaction, I think all of us would like to kind of have that outlet. Now more than ever, we need to kind of rein that in, take a few steps back and then think of what we say, think of what we do and how we do it and say, is it helping everyone? Or is it just an outlet for anxiety and emotion? And if it's not helping people, if it's not good for your organization, then we need to check that ourselves. Now, we also had students, and I think if we want a barometer of what we should be doing, talk to students. Dr. Beeler had mentioned that if you want to know how the kids are doing, talk to the kids. And I think if we want to continue to improve, kids need to be front and center in that conversation. Yes, they're teenagers. Yes, they're five-year-olds. Yes, they may have body training issues still and yes, they may not be in their seat on the bus. In the grand scheme of things, that's what happens with kids. They can help through this round. I'm awfully proud of the work that our staff did, especially Mr. Vone, Ms. Oaks, Mr. Carisi covering for Seneca today, Mr. Seaver and his staff, Mrs. Tudek and our administrative team. When we got our test kits late yesterday, we weren't sure if they were coming in over the weekend. We were the last county in the state to get them. We didn't know, so we didn't really have a plan. And then we got the kits very late yesterday afternoon. And the plan was going to be, well, we'll let people come get them tomorrow. We talked to administrators, so when Mark talks about the courageous leadership of kind of throwing it out there and being safe, Mark, Karen, Kristen and then administrative me said we need to get these out today. I said, okay. I went to Chris, went to Jerry, went to Kim, went to Gal. Went to the buildings and ground staff. They moved mountains because it was a priority. I'm not sure if that's going to have our numbers mushroom and explode. Maybe it does and then we'll have some more immunity. I don't know, I'm not a scientist. But they knew that that was important and they made it important. We have staff in every classroom and every department do that every day. That's why Sal Mago is leading in many regards. We still have a lot of work to do, but I'm awfully glad and proud of the staff and awfully glad that we're in the area. There's a lot more that I could say about a lot of things. I'm just going to say, welcome back, happy new year. Uh, we've got about six months and three weeks until graduation. Um, so it'll be here before you know it, right, Mr. Seaver?
Yes, you will.
So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Bob. All right, let's move on to consent agenda. Um, we motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Barb. Second by Dale. Do we have any questions? I have my usual. Karen, we're losing money in the kitchen again. Bacteria.
Um, I, I think it's going to take us about a year to. I don't want to say the problem. He sort of made him. We want to start at class. With all the, the comment that we're going to buy. Getting some of those, I have a thought that, you know, like, probably some of that we didn't have. So that kind of stuff is a lot. So working with getting staffing appropriate distribution and it's hard to tell yet even because we sort of. They, they want to go on the gravity. Still, it's hard to tell what the real world will hold for.
But the feeling is awfully good. All right, anybody have anything else for consent agenda? All in favor?
I.
Uh, two thumbs up on the screen, opposed, abstained, motion carried. Uh, next item is our old business policies. Uh, be resolved that upon a recommendation of superintendent, following a second reading, the following policies be approved. One policy fifty-six forty smoking, tobacco and cannabis marijuana use. Two policy sixty-one forty employee medical examination. Three policy sixty-one fifty alcohol, tobacco, drugs and other substances. Do we have the motion to approve the policies?
Motion.
Motion by Barb, second by Sue. Uh, do we have any discussion, question?
Thinking.
And just one comment for sixty-one fifty. Uh, it's a designation of a point person that there are some subjects of use. Uh, issues for staff and I'd like to designate our new manager, Mrs. Creed. That's a point of contact for that because uh, similarly that would involve some threats of the medical issue. Like you said, maybe we have some point of contact and then each other staff is. Our employees have issues and need to go through that. All right, we had a motion by Barb, second by Sue. Um, all in favor? Right now? Two thumbs up on the screen, opposed, obtained, all right, motion carried. Hey, item number seven, uh, we're on the declared surplus items. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of superintendent, the following items listed in the public content section be declared surplus and be properly disposed of, approved. Do we have a motion? Motion. Dale. Any questions? All in favor? Right now? Two thumbs up, opposed, seen, motion carried. We have the audit committee charter, be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approve the updated audit committee charter. Do you have a motion? Wait. By Sue, second by Dale. Any questions? All in favor? Right now? Hi. Two thumbs up. Opposed, seen, motion carried. See, we have retro commissioning contract. Be resolved that upon the, upon the recommendation of superintendent, director of facilities and the finance committee, the Board of Education informs facility dynamics engineering to review the HVAC systems and provide an independent analysis of the system configuration and operation at the cost of twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Barb. Dale. Any questions? Bob, give us a quick rundown on this one. Uh, the retro commissioning contract is to help us identify um any underlying issues that may have contributed to the mold issue and the humidity issue at Prospect Elementary. After talking with our engineers, secrets, as well as our direct management firm Turner, um, it was recommended, um, I believe the HVAC people and stole, recommended additional investigation regarding uh slab work and to see if there's any issues from there. Um, we did get an environmental survey back this week that said that the humidity levels significantly lower than the outside. Humidity, which is good, uh, we're going to continue to monitor that, but it's to help us identify any underlying issues that we can't necessarily readily see from, from the game we're back to that. But good at finding things that we can't necessarily see with the naked eye. They were the middle bin or the other one, uh, the lowest biner did seem to warm enough to blow. And um, other bin where they filled it high, so we split the difference uh with the low responsible bin. Like that middle bin. So the summer, we don't see the mold issue. Make no promises. Really try like this, he's not. All right, we had a motion by Barb, second by Dale, all in favor? Right now? Hi. Two thumbs up, opposed, seen, motion carried. Hey, next we have the school calendar twenty-two-one, twenty-two amendment. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the twenty-two-one, twenty-two school calendar be amended the best a Monday, January third, twenty-two-two is the superintendent day with statutory report. However, no student attendance due to. Question? So. From Dale. Barb. Question?
Can I ask Jessica to see if she could, if she can talk and I can hear her? Cause I just changed speakers.
Hello.
Oh, that's me. Wait, no, that's just me. Hang on. There, ask her, Jess, can you say something else? There we are. All right.
Thank you.
I knew I could fix it. I just hadn't have the time.
All right. Tell Nikki to get back on, we're going to hear from her. Where was I?
Uh, I think, oh, I think I'm.
Oh, okay. We had a motion by Dale, second by Barb, all in favor?
Oh, did we?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay. All in favor? Right now? Hi. I got two thumbs up, opposed, seen, motion carried. Okay.
Brad, Brad has a question in the chat. He wants to know, do we know when the state tests are going to be conducted?
The Regents exams for January were canceled. I have not heard anything about the spring.
Yes, um, correct, so it looks at the February Regents exams have been canceled. Um, currently, right now, the English and the Darks for grade three, three are scheduled for March twenty-ninth through thirty-first. Um, and the math is the last week in April. So traditionally where they are, so the last week in March for ELA, the last week in April for mathematics. And the science is um June, May twenty-fourth. So at this point in time, three, three testing is still on schedule.
Thanks, Mark. Okay. Oh, hey, we're. Okay, uh, next item was the indigenous Indian policies and procedures. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education adopts the indigenous Indian policies and procedures, IPDs, to fully comply with all requirements of Title VII Impact Eight Program of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of eighteen sixty-five, former Republic Law, eighty-one, eighty-seven, four, be approved. Do you have a motion? I still. Second by Sue. Second by Dale. Any questions? All right, Bob, give us a rundown. Uh, the indigenous policy and procedure uh plan is something that we have had in place since February two thousand thirteen. Uh, it's a requirement for Federal Act E application, which is due at the end of January. This document is approved uh through our regular uh process at the rework meeting with all of our policy procedures in July. And we reaffirm it uh one time before the application, typically in December, but we have scheduling issues in December. Uh, there are no changes to the regulations, no recommended changes to the policy based on changes from that day to that moment in Washington uh or requests for us to change it. And uh, if there are changes, it's a rolling document, so we can go through the process and make changes. I will note that for the policy, we track participation rates. Those are on the website on the Native American Services tab. We'll update that again after the second semester starts. And that will include the activities and events. And uh, we also track um formal communications. Uh, we had two so far for the twenty-one point. We had two so far for the 21-22 year. One dealt with the school, which we've addressed and resolved. And the other dealt with the parent and a COVID transportation concern with the dress and resolve with the assistance of Mr. Early and Mrs. Gray and myself. So all things considered, it's smooth sailing. And no changes to the IDP.
Okay, just to point out, the next IEC is on January 12th at 4:00 PM in this location. All right, just putting it out in. Hey, we had a motion by Dale, a second by Barb. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong one. Yep, I have a motion by Sue Freeze, a second by Dale Golden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got two thumbs up. Opposed, seen. All right, motion carried. And now we are on to A, personal consent agenda. We have a lot of personal action. Certified classified reservations. We have certified classified FMA, these leave of absence, some Indian absence. We have certified classified appointments. We have transportation, running, running stipend. We have certified classified substitute appointments. Internships, practical, senior teacher, the community education program. Amendment of a volunteer and from a coaching athletics team, medical coordinator mentor. Motion by Dale, second by Sue. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two thumbs up. Opposed, seen, motion carried. And we have an introduction. None of the individuals being appointed are on call or present, so I would say just thank you to all of the individuals who are. Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, I have an in board, reports of discussion. Very good reports, minutes. We do have a thank you from Keteroc Community Action. Pull that up here. To the Salmaika School District regarding donation. Dear ladies and gentlemen, the Keterocist Community Action would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your kind and generous donation made for us recently. Your donation will be utilized for emergency food pantry and the White House Community Kitchen, which serves hot meals to the needy five evenings per week. Keterocist Community Action is an anti-poverty organization dedicated to helping people and changing lives. As you may or may not know, all of the donations that we receive are used to ease the conditions of poverty and violence. And give new opportunities to low-income people in Keterocis County. Thank you for your kind consideration. Very true yours, Deborah Lasky, Central Intake Board Member. All right, we have a couple of second readings on policies and upcoming events, January 11th, Finance Committee, January 12th, Indigenous Education Committee, January 12th, also an NHS induction at the. Think about. January 17th, we are called for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Board meeting is January 18th in this location. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Thank you, everyone, for coming. See you next time. Barb? Second by Dale. All in favor? Two thumbs up. Opposed, seen, motion carried. Sue's answer to this.